Good evening, everybody. I'd like to formally open the 2025 Annual Town Meeting and call it to order. I have determined that a quorum is present, and I've examined the return of the warrant and find it in order. At this time, if you're comfortable and able, I'd ask you to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As you've seen from the warrant, there are quite a few articles tonight, so we're going to try to keep a decent pace going while we also give everyone a chance to speak. It's often said that town meeting is the most pure form of democracy. There's a lot going on nationally and locally, and honestly, this is the opportunity for you to speak, to be heard, and to vote. So although the Select Board and many committees have put things before you this evening, ultimately, it's the vote of these people in this room that will determine the course of Deerfield's future for the next year, the budget. All the articles are really up to you this evening. So it's an incredible chance for all of us not to just talk about what's going on, but to actually do something. So with that said, let's do it respectfully and in accordance with the rules that are set forth by the town of Deerfield. At check-in, everyone should have received two handouts. So I know most people grabbed the town meeting packet, but there was a second one that's going to become fairly important, so if you don't have that, maybe sneak over to the table at some point, not right now, just to grab it. Town meetings are run by the town bylaws and also by a publication called Town Meeting Time, and all some of it can be a little wonky. It's my job to enforce what has been established by the town. So if you ever have a question about what's going on procedurally, just raise your hand, say point of order, or I'll call on you, and we can talk through what's going on at any point, so please don't be afraid to do that. Again, I don't want to take too much time going through some of this stuff, but this packet and the warrant that was published is meant to give you kind of notice of what's going to be discussed this evening, but that isn't necessarily what's going to be voted on. What's voted on are the motions. So for each warrant article, there will be a speaker who will come up and make a motion. So it's important to listen to the motion. You may hear it differ a little from what you read, so that's what you're actually deliberating and voting on. In terms of what will happen, a motion will be made, it will be seconded. I'll turn back to the individual who made the motion and ask them if they'd like to explain briefly what the motion is about, and at that point, I'll open up the floor to any questions. Once questions have been satisfied, we'll take a vote. In terms of speaking, just to be clear on that, if you wish to be, if you wish to speak, it is strictly enforced that you come to the microphone, you wait to be recognized. At that point, state your name and your street that you live on. You don't have to give your specific address, and I will call on you, and we will listen to your questions. Any questions are meant to be directed to the moderator. That's how your bylaws read, so it's not an opportunity to speak to other individuals at the table or back to the individuals that are here. If there is a question from your question, I'll direct it to the appropriate person. As I said, there's a lot on tonight, so it's really important that if you wish to speak that you do so, and you're encouraged to do so, but try to be brief in what you have to say and make it meaningful. It's easiest for people to absorb, and quite frankly, it is usually the most productive. So Abraham Lincoln gave the Gettysburg Address. I don't know if anyone knows how long that was, but it was about two minutes. So let's try to beat Abe on that. And lastly, applause. So in my opinion, civility involves both negative reactions and positive reactions, and avoiding both. When you applaud, it leaves the people who may be not agreeing with you left to feel that their opinion is somehow devalued. So our bylaws specifically state you're not supposed to applaud, and I know that there's excitement and enthusiasm about things, but if you can refrain from that, it's really respectful to the whole group here. With all of that, as is the custom, I'd like to have the people facing you just introduce themselves, so we'll start from the far end.
Brenda Hill, Town Accountant.
Cassie Sandrell, Town Clerk.
Trevor McDaniel, Select Board, Board of Health.
Tim Hillchee, Select Board, Board of Health.
Dan Graves, Town Moderator.
Lisa Mead, Town Council.
Christopher Dunn, Town Administrator.
Julie Chalfont, Finance Committee.
Margaret Nardowitz, Finance Committee.
John Poreski, Finance Committee.
Thank you.
Mark Brennan, Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mark. Just so I can get a sense, the original plan was to have non-voters sitting in this bleacher section here, but are there voters? It's fine if you stay where you are, but I'm just trying to stand. If you are voters, you're there, and are there voters up here? Okay, so all votes will be by the orange ballot. You have no hand count, so just raise your hand high with the vote, so I appreciate it. It's a big room. We've only done it here one other time during COVID, so it's a learning experience for all of us, so be patient. With that, I have two initial motions. I move that the reading of all articles be waived, and that prior to the reading of a motion under the article, the moderator briefly summarize the content of the article to be considered, and further, that unless objection is raised, the reading of detailed motions be waived, where the article as printed can, in the opinion of the moderator, be incorporated by reference in any motion presented. Second. Thank you. Basically, this lets us summarize what's being presented to you instead of going through the formal reading of everything, and it's meant to kind of expedite the process. So any questions on that? All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. I move that the following people be allowed to address the audience during town meeting: Attorney Lisa Mead, Town Council; Brenda Hill, Town Accountant; Christopher Dunn, Town Administrator; Kathleen Sandrell, Town Clerk; Shelley Peretta, Director of Business Administration, Frontier Regional Union 38; Tina Gemme, Principal, Deerfield Elementary School; Richard Martin, Superintendent, Franklin County Tech School; Russell Cobris, Business Manager, Franklin County Tech School; Mark Brennan III; Josie Silva; Jamene On; Amy Talbot; Sienna Costa; and Reina Wansey. Second. Thank you. By our bylaws, only town residents are allowed to speak, so this allows individuals who are not town residents, who may have information to share with you, the opportunity to speak. These individuals tend to comment on the budget and other items, or they have otherwise requested to speak. So any questions on that? All those in favor? Opposed? That motion also carries. For the last few years, we've been using what's called the Consent Agenda for the few series of articles, and in theory, these are non-controversial articles that we do have to vote on, but we've kind of bunched them together in a way that allows us to move through them quickly. In years past, we had to go through them one by one, vote, discuss. So with that, we are going to try that again this year. So Mr. Hillchee will make the motion, and he'll list off the letters involved in each. If you want to stop on any of those, just yell out "hold," so one time you don't have to come to the microphone, and we'll come back to those items. Otherwise, we'll vote on them all together. So with that, Mr. Hillchee, Article One.
I move the town approve Article One on the following matters: A, B, C, D, E, F, and G.
Second. Mr. Hillchee.
This article combines several annual requests into one article to expedite the business of the town meeting.
Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. Same process, this will be a consent motion. Mr. McDaniel?
I move the town transfer from free cash the following amounts in items A, B, C for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2025; the sum of $100,000 for Reserve Fund of the town in accordance with General Law, Chapter 40, Section 6; the sum of $46,647 for other post-employment benefits, liability trust fund; and the sum of $90,000 for tuition and transportation expenses of students to the Smith Vocational Agricultural High School.
Second. Thank you. Mr. McDaniel?
So this motion is for Smith Vocational mailed out acceptance letters the week of April 21st, two students residing in Deerfield. The other articles are just pro forma.
Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. Article Three, Mr. McDaniel?
I move the town approve the maximum spending amounts for the revolving funds established in the Deerfield General Bylaws, Chapter 20, Section 20-3, Departmental Revolving Funds pursuant to General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2.
Second. Mr. McDaniel?
So this is an annual vote to set maximum spending limits for these revolving funds for the recycling, parks, recreation, and planning.
Any questions? All those in favor? That motion carries. Article Four, Mr. Hillchee.
I move that the town transfer $90,000 from the Vocational Education Appropriation for Fiscal Year 2025 to fund a fiscal year 2025 shortfall related to snow and ice removal expenses.
Second. Mr. Hillchee?
So typically, every year, we spend more on snow and ice removal than we budget, and so this money was available from this account to fund a shortfall in the snow and ice removal expenses line item for the current fiscal year.
Any questions? All those in favor? That motion carries. Article Five, Mr. McDaniel?
I move the town transfer $200,000 from free cash to the capital stabilization.
Mr. McDaniel?
So this, we're going to see, you can see the Finance Committee budget overview, but this is the first year in a while where we've been able to take some free cash and move it into capital stabilization. We've, over the last several years, we've depleted that account quite a bit, but we have the ability to add $200,000 this year, so that's our goal.
And Mr. McDaniel, can you just explain what free cash is?
Sure. Free cash is kind of leftover money from the previous year that was budgeted, but just not fully spent in each department, or we've taken in more in local receipts than we budgeted. So you wind up with a little excess from last year's budget, and we kind of direct those to non-recurring expenses, or we were able to fund general stabilization or capital stabilization for future one-time purchases.
Any questions? All those in favor? That motion carries. Article Six, Mr. Hillchee?
I move the moderator read amounts recommended to be appropriated under this article, and unless objection is made, each item recommended in the report of the Finance Committee shall be tentatively accepted as appropriated for the purpose stated. If an objection is made to any recommendation, such appropriation shall be taken separately, and the amount thereof and the manner of taking the same shall be determined by vote of the meeting and tentatively accepted. One vote shall be taken appropriating each amount so accepted as a single appropriation, not to be exceeded.
The budget starts on page 18 in the handout, and what we are required to do is read each line item that's involved. So I will read each line item aloud. If you have any desire to speak on any of those items, you'll yell out "hold." I will continue to go through the entire budget, and then when we get to the end, we'll go back and discuss the holds individually. So before we start that process, historically, we've allowed the Finance Committee to speak briefly on their deliberations. So to understand the Finance Committee, the Finance Committee is appointed by the moderator, and it is meant to be a checks and balances essentially to the Select Board, so they take every line item of the budget and discuss it. They talk to other committees, make their own votes, and then make their own recommendations to all of you here tonight. So that's their role, and they would like to speak briefly, so go ahead.
He keeps saying briefly.
Very briefly. Abe Lincoln.
Got it. I'm Julie Chalfont. I'm Chair of the Finance Committee this year. I'm going to quickly take you through what is in your handout. If you begin on page seven, I'm going to start at the end and work backwards. Page seven, up at the top at the right-hand corner, you'll see a breakdown of where our expenses go by category. If we include all the expenses for education, including the benefits for the people who work for education, that's about 62% of our overall budget. You can see that public safety, general government, public works, and benefits, each of those are about 8% to 9% of our budget, and then South County EMS, Culture and Rec, and Human Services are much smaller at 1% to 2% apiece. If you back up one page to page six, one closer to the front, Table Two at the bottom there gives you the change in each of those categories from last year to this year. The overall budget increase, you can see right in the middle for the omnibus, is 7.6% increase from last year. A big piece of this is actually the debt service. About 3% of that 7% is the library debt finally coming online, and we voted for the library a few years ago, and that's there. If we start at the top and work down, general government is almost level funded. There have been some increases and some decreases, but they sort of balance each other out. Public safety, the increase there is one additional police officer, and this is also the year in which we renegotiate all of the contracts, so there's a new contract with the police department, and also the cost of the police cruiser has gone up. We generally buy a police cruiser every year. Education line item, this is a level service budget. There are no new services, no new teachers in the education. The changes you see in the different schools are the change in the number of students, and then we also saw a reduction in the state aid that's coming to Frontier. Public Works line, there is one new position in the Public Works, the Highway Department. They too are renegotiating the contract, so there's a new contract, and there was some deferred maintenance that is being taken care of this year that's increasing the costs. Human Services, that line, the South County Senior Center has some personnel that used to be covered by a grant. The number of people, the number of hours is not increasing, but it used to be covered by a grant. The grant, we no longer have, so those hours are coming on to the town budget, so you see that one go up. We also had budgeted additional hours for the town nurse, but those, we found another source of funding, thanks to some folks in town, and so we're able to remove that. I've lost track where I am. Culture and Rec, that increase is primarily the electricity costs for the new library building. That, we are going to see a reduction in also with the hopes that we'll be able to put solar on the building and reduce those electricity costs. Debt Service, I already mentioned, the library debt is coming online, so that's what the major increase there is. We have three projects that are debt-excluded, the library, the wastewater treatment plant, and the highway garage. The highway garage will be paid off in about 10 years, so that's the first one that will come off of this. Benefits, we saw a big increase in insurance, health insurance, and in retirement, so both of those went up quite a bit. So that's the increase that we're seeing. The question about how much your taxes are going to go up, it's going to be in the neighborhood of that 7% that we're seeing. And again, about 4% of that is the regular increases in the budget, 3% of that is the new debt coming online. Couple of general comments. Every line item, as mentioned, every line item has been reviewed and discussed. The budget falls within all the legal constraints required. Finance Committee continues to have a concern about the amount of free cash that we're using for recurring expenses, but there are several promising items. One is the South County EMS put into, last year had a plan for improved revenue generation, and we are seeing that this year, so we see a decrease in the amount that we're paying for South County EMS. And then, as mentioned, we're able to contribute to the Capital Stabilization Fund. This is the first time since FY '21 that we've been able to do that, so both of those are promising. And the last thing I have to say is a huge thank you to Brenda Hill, our Town Accountant, who hopes that this will be her last annual town meeting with us because she plans to retire. We wish that that was not true, because Brenda makes this whole budgeting process run more smoothly than you could imagine, and she is an absolute joy to work with, and so we're very sorry to see her leave us, but appreciate everything she's done.
I can only say, if you only knew how much Brenda does, so it is going to be a tremendous loss, but we're tremendously grateful as well, so thank you, Brenda. Julie, that's, you're good?
Okay. So with that, I am going to read each line item. Moderator, $500. Again, if there's any question, yell out a "hold," and we'll come back to it. Select Board salaries, $16,000. Select Board staff salaries, $378,473. Select Board administration expense, $19,000. Finance Committee, $300. Accountant salary, $97,408. Accountant expense, $22,950. Assessor salaries, $12,500. Assessor's administrative assistant, $86,969. Assessor's expense, $19,491. Assessor's quincoquennial recertification, $22,000. Treasurer-collector salaries, $160,073. Treasurer-collector expense, $37,009.5. Legal expense, $85,000. Personnel board, $500. IT hardware, $6,000. PEG access capital expense, $4,000. Contracted services, $270,090. Town clerk salaries, $110,221. Town clerk expense, $22,450. Conservation commission, $2,000. Open space committee, $250. Planning board, $2,000. Zoning Board of Appeals, $1,000. Agricultural Commission, $100. Energy Committee, $1,000. Town Office Building Maintenance, $125,184. Town Office expense, $16,000. General Insurance, $92,000. Police payroll, $1,244,166. Police Department expense, $121,000. Police Department Cruiser, $73,000. Inspections Department payroll, $187,497. Inspections Department expense, $4,950. Emergency Management, $2,800. Animal Control, $23,964. Deerfield Elementary School, $5,501,517. Frontier Regional School, $4,551,984. Frontier Regional Debt Service, $0. Frontier Regional Transportation, $122,280. Franklin Tech Assessment, $608,319. Franklin Technical Debt Service, $18,863. General Highway Payroll, $731,968. General Highway Expense, $356,600. Winter Snow and Ice Removal, $100,000. Street Lighting, $10,000. Transfer Station Expense, $248,920. Test Well Monitoring and Maintenance, $30,000.
What's that?
It was 33.5. And it was 30,000. Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, we're not going to hold that. That was my misread. Test Well Monitoring and Maintenance, $33,500, which is a $30,000 reduction from what's Board of Health payroll, $103,868. Board of Health expense, $9,825. Emergency COVID expense, $0. Council on Aging, $100. Senior Center expense, $106,433. Veterans District Assessment, $15,952. Veterans Benefits, $16,000. ADA Coordinator, $250. The Tilton Library, $248,388. The Summer Swim Program, $6,003. Tri-Town Beach expense, $37,835. Recreation Department Director's salary, $70,017. Historical Commission, $1,175. Veterans Day Memorial Day expense, $2,500. Maturing Debt, $562,264. Interest on maturing debt, $548,808. Interest on temporary loans, $5,000. FERCOG Core Assessment, $41,463. Unfunded Sick Leave and Vacation, $20,000. Franklin County Regional Retirement, $703,858. Workers' Compensation, $54,569. Unemployment Insurance, $15,000. Group Insurance for the Town, $466,527. Group Insurance for the School, $913,619. Medicare Insurance, $127,410. There are no holds. Mr. Hillchee?
I move the town appropriate $19,628,746 to fund the accepted amounts voted and to meet this appropriation transfer. Zero from overlay surplus, $71,340 from SCENZ Enterprise Fund, $12,900 from South County Senior Center Fund, $86,500 from Sewer Enterprise Fund, $4,637 from receipts reserved for debt, $5,000 from the Wetlands Protection Fund, $2,000 from the Cemetery RRA Fund, $325,184 from free cash, and raise and appropriate $1,000, $19,121,185.
Any discussion? All those in favor, yes, come to the microphone. Sorry, there was a question.
Irene Winklebauer, Stage Road. As we were going through this list, there were several items where the amounts read were different, so is it the amounts that were read or the amounts that were on the paper?
The amounts that were read. Yep, there were some last-minute changes in a few items, and the amounts that were read are what you're voting on this evening.
Okay. Thank you.
All those in favor? That motion carries. Article Seven, Mr. McDaniel?
I move the town raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or otherwise provide $2199,618 to operate the Sewer Enterprise Fund for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2025 in accordance with the provisions of General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53F and 1/2. Such amount to be funded from enterprise revenue and retained earnings.
Mr. McDaniel?
So the Sewer Enterprise Fund operating budget is funded by user fees, retained earnings, and investment income.
Any questions? Discussion? All those in favor? That motion carries. Article Eight, Mr. Hillchee?
I move the town appropriate the sum of $1,842,528 and transfer from free cash the sum of $414,995 to fund the South County Emergency Medical Service Enterprise Fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2025, and to meet the town of Deerfield's allocated share of costs.
Second. Mr. Hillchee?
So this basically spells out what we need to do to fund our EMS service, and you can see a Finance Committee budget overview if you have questions.
Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. Article Nine, Mr. McDaniel?
I move the town transfer $50,000 from the Sewer Enterprise Fund retained earnings to fund the capital improvement plan for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024.
Second. Mr. McDaniel?
So these are two projects that we are going to use retained earnings from the current 2024 retained earnings, and this would be a sewer lift station generator that will be installed at the Captain Lathrop. that will be installed at the Captain Lathrop Lift Station, and a four-inch water supply to the old Deerfield wastewater plant.
All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. Article 10, Mr. Hiltche.
I move that the town transfer $84,500 from free cash to fund the capital improvement plan for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025.
Second. Mr. Hiltche?
So the capital requests recommended to be funded out of free cash by the CIPC and the Finance Committee include Deerfield Elementary School projects and computer upgrades for town offices.
All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. Article 11. Ms. Sylvester?
Read this part.
Yes.
Article 11, okay, to see if the town will act.
Ha, I'm sorry, not to interrupt. So you can move right to the "I move."
Okay. I move that the town appropriate $200,000 for Phase 1 of the Deerfield Elementary School Playground Project, and to meet said appropriation transfer, $200,000 from the Community Preservation Fund, 2026 estimated revenues, all in a manner consistent with the proposal submitted by the Deerfield School Committee and approved by the Community Preservation Committee with the stipulation that the school spend their contribution of $186,000 to the project before spending the CPA funds of $200,000. Said funds to be expended within three years under the direction of the Select Board, and any unused funds to be returned to the Community Preservation Fund as required by statute.
Would you like to explain briefly?
So they put an application for this money to help because the playground is in bad need of repair and upgrade to make it more eligible for disabled students. And we thought that this was a good use of our funds, so we have recommended it.
Mr. McDaniel, would you mind just explaining briefly the Community Preservation Act or? Or Tim, either one, any of some of the select boards.
Yes, so the Community Preservation Act is, we as a town of Deerfield adopted a 3% rule. We have a surcharge on our real estate bills, and this builds up local money. The match is often, the state matches funds. We have about 80 cents on the dollar, so we get an 80% return on these investments. And it's meant to provide money for things that often don't get covered in a budget like historic preservation, open space, recreation, and community housing. Those are the four categories.
Thank you very much. So it might have been easier preface to vote before, but so the next series of votes will all be, applications are submitted to the committee, and then that committee has voted on them and is bringing them forward tonight. So the first one is the playground. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
There's a question, there's a question.
I'm sorry, if you have a question, you've got to come to the microphone. I apologize, unless you're unable, and just, we can try to get a microphone to you. Good evening. Sorry, I didn't see you.
That's fine. I'm Jeanette Ward, I live in Deerfield. I want to know, under this appropriate, the CPC appropriation for the playground, what is in regards of replacing unsafe services and moving hazards? What does that entail?
Ms. Sylvester, are you able to address that or?
Somewhat, but I think that maybe the superintendent might like to speak to it because he's much better versed than I am.
Mr. Modesto, if you'd like to come to the microphone and introduce yourself.
I can't hear.
Oh, I'm sorry, can't hear me or?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm your superintendent, Darius Modesto. This project is, if you're looking at the school, the left-hand side of the building, there is two playgrounds. We are looking at the one that's further back. The problem with the playground is it was redone about 11 years ago. New structures were put in, those structures are staying. However, the ground, they put in some rubber walkways, it got washed out underneath, and the chips, the wood chips that are used for safety underneath are, get tracked in every single recess over them. So any student who is in a chair or has mobility issues is a walking hazard. So this project is to put a new surface down. It is also to put a new playing, play equipment that allow a student who is, has issues with mobility, including being in a wheelchair, to actually have a device they can play on. And it does also include another play device where, we have a couple of devices that are, not devices, but play structures that like one or two students can play on. We're replacing with one where a dozen students can play on it. So really improving the playground on that.
Thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. Sylvester?
I move that the town appropriate $16,000 for Deerfield's share of the Tri-Town Beach Dock Project, and to meet said appropriation, transfer $16,000 from the Beach Dock, I'm sorry, from the Community Preservation Fund Open Space Reserve, all in a manner consistent with the proposal submitted by the Tri-Town Beach District Commission and approved by the Community Preservation Committee with the stipulation that Waitley also approve their half of the funding. Said funds to be expended within three years under the direction of the Select Board, and any unused funds to be returned to the Community Preservation Fund as required by statute.
Second. Ms. Sylvester?
So they had requested that they replace, I believe, the dock they had so that it could be used by swimmers as well as lifeguards to have better access to swimmers, so they can get to them quicker if, and just have a, I believe that the dock is, can be removed at the end of the season and put back in for the following season.
Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. Ms. Sylvester?
I move that the town appropriate $18,000 for the cost share for the Mass Trails Grant for the River and Ridge Trail Complex Phase 1 project, and to meet said appropriation, transfer $18,000 from the Community Preservation Fund Open Space Reserve, all in a manner consistent with a proposal submitted by the Open Space Committee and approved by the Community Preservation Committee. Said funds to be expended within three years under the direction of the Select Board, and any unused funds to be returned to the Community Preservation Fund as required by statute.
Second. Ms. Sylvester?
So I think, Julie, are you able to speak to this a little bit more than me? Where are you? Julie Caswell, yeah, thank you.
Ms. Caswell, if you can just introduce yourself and your street.
Yeah, Julie Caswell, River Road. This is a proposal to the Mass Trails Program with the state, and it's the entire cost of the grant is $73,000. They require a match, and so the matches that would be coming from the Community Preservation Fund is $18,000. And the project has two parts. One is improving the Pecumtuck Ridge Trail between Hillside Road and Stage Road. And the second part is to work with the University of Massachusetts on the possibility of having a riverwalk loop along the Connecticut River at the intersection of River Road and Hillside.
Thank you. Looks like there is a, if you want to come to the microphone, Mr. Upton. Hi, sir, if you can just introduce yourself.
John Frank, Stage Road. John Frank, Stage Road.
Go ahead, sir.
I find the proposal misguided. The proposal quoted a mandate from residents at a survey in Shorette a few years ago that asked for more places to walk. This area, except for the UMass Hayfield, is already an area that's walked. I think the money would be better spent having places to walk on town land close to North Main Street.
Thank you, sir. Hello.
Hi, Matt Russo, Captain Lathrop Drive. My question is, if we go forward with this, does this cover parking, trash management, any other issues that we're going to have in that area? Or are we going to set up a walking trail that we're then going to be asked to appropriate money for parking and maintenance and emptying trash and taking care of an area which are going to add additional expenses?
Ms. Caswell, do you have any input on that or?
Yeah, and the first point about the Pecumtuck Ridge Trail between Stage Road and Hillside already being walked.
Just right into that mic if you can, there's, it's.
Sorry, I was much closer. Okay, for the Stage Road to Hillside portion of the Pecumtuck Ridge Trail, it is walked by a few people, but not by very many. It goes across the Birchwood Refuge, which is owned by the town and true UMass property. And it will be an extension and an upgrade of the Pecumtuck Ridge Trail and make it more prominent and available and noticeable and usable by residents of Deerfield and by others as well. We have in the plan the renovation of this trail, and we expect to have the Open Space Committee and other folks in town to be working on the actual management of the trail. This is an application that's before the Mass Trails Committee right now, and we will learn by June whether it's been funded or not. But the plan is that the actual maintenance of the trail will be by citizens.
Thank you. Mr. Upton?
Good evening, Jeff Upton, Hillcrest Avenue. And I did have a few questions here, just to make sure I know what I'm voting on. And once again, walking trails, I think, are great, but it says Phase 1 here, $18,000. I'm wondering how many phases this trail is going to be in long term? What is the timeframe of that? What is the total cost of that? And what does it involve as far as the trails? Does it involve doing like stone stairways, wood walk bridges, things of that nature? Next question, who's going to do the labor? You've mentioned some of that already. But also the maintenance of it, and what I'm concerned about is, does this expose the town to liabilities? If somebody should fall and get hurt on one of those walking trails that we've designed? So those are my questions. Thank you.
Ms. Caswell, would you like to try to address those questions?
This grant, Mass Trails Grant, is Phase 1 because Phase 2 would actually be building this walking trail, walking loop around the UMass property by the Connecticut River. So that's Phase 1, is design of that trail and work on the Pecumtuck Ridge Trail between Hillside and Stage Road. And Phase 2 would be actually building the loop along the river, and we would seek funding for that from the Mass Trails Program. And so it would be a Phase 2 coming up. The part of the trail that is from Stage Road to Hillside is expected or is in the budget for, in the grant application, to have three bridges over the creeks and some walking steps, not stone, but just to make it more accessible. It is not an accessible trail that anybody could go on, but it would be a trail that many more people would be able to use with these changes. On liability, the state has a law that says if it's public access space and you're not charging for people to use the space, there is no liability.
Ms. Russo, just under our bylaws, there's just an individual behind you that needs to speak, that wishes to speak, so we can't have you speak twice without everyone else having a chance.
I've hiked these trails. They're great places to go, but they are dangerous going down there. We have a great town. Who's been maintaining those trails up above? Hasn't it been the state? They've been doing a great job with a lot of the trails, but this really work needs to be done. Thanks for putting this together. I think it would benefit us all. You know, I would be glad to help maintain trails. I do as we go. We hike these trails and we pick up sticks and break branches, so. Please, think very carefully, it sounds great.
Thank you. Mr. Russo, we've got a couple more speakers.
I'm Steve Swatter from 193 North Main Street.
Nice to meet you, thank you.
Hi, Lynn Rose, River Road, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I don't have a prepared speech, but I was one of the people that helped pass the CPA, start the Open Space Committee. I was through two reiterations of updating the open space or creating it, the open space plan. I have to say, for the last however many years that's been in place, we heard people wanted walking trails, they wanted access to the river. Since we have this new group, the Open Space Committee has been amazing. I'm on the email list, I had to get off the committee. But these guys have done so much work, you can't even believe the amount of volunteer work that went into this plan. There's a lot of thought. This is not, this didn't just happen, this has been happening over the last year and a half. And my understanding from, I can't tell how many surveys we did over the past 20 years, people want walking trails, they want access to the river. It's unbelievable that they figured it out. And you guys got to give these guys credit. I can't answer all the questions that they can about the specifics, but the work that went into this and what's behind it and the need in the community is something that, who else, who else here has gone out of their way to figure this out? All right? We've been trying for like over 20 years, and I give these guys tons of credit.
Sir?
Peter Lankowski, Stage Road. Hiking trails are great. I'm very fortunate to, where I live, that I can go and I can use them. My concern is, like even through COVID, people found the trails, and parking was an issue. It was a problem on Stage Road, it was a problem on Ridge Road, and if you, even today, the state, the one on Hillside Road. Curious, are there going to be any provisions or parking made for this so that we can be assured that we can get through our roads without people parking in the roads?
Ms. Caswell, did you want to address parking again?
Yeah, this, the Mass Trails Plan that we have in front of us right now and is in this application does not have new parking areas or parking lots as part of it. We're hoping to work with DCR to improve and increase the size of the Hillside Trailhead. And parking's definitely an issue and one that we're looking at very closely with the Riverview Lot that we're talking to UMass about. They're talking about having a parking area that would be on their property just along Hillside Road where there's a couple barns that are falling down at this point. So parking's definitely an issue, and we're sensitive to that issue in people's neighborhoods. But it's something that we're working on.
Mr. Decker?
Mr. Moderator, my question deals with who owns the land? Do we have an easement by right or is it by prescription or what before we go to develop it or improve it? The other thing is, the state, in their infinite wisdom in the 1950s, took most of North Sugarloaf, and they were going to develop that. North Chicago and they were going to develop that, and they've never developed it. And, you know, they own the whole thing, all the way over to South Chicago. You know, that may be where they should be concentrating on, where they already own the land, the state does. Thank you.
Ms. Caswell, did you want to address ownership?
Yeah, the portion of the Pecum Tuck Ridge Trail from Stage Road to Hillside, the part near Hillside is owned by the University of Massachusetts Sammers. And we have a memorandum of understanding with them that the Pecum Tuck Ridge Trail can be used in the way that we have put it into this grant application. The second part of the trail is on the Birchwood Nature Refuge, which is owned by the town of Deerfield and is under Article 97 protection.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, Darcy Albanese from Cresview Drive. I had a question. Thank you for, everybody, first of all, for the work that you've put behind this so far. I am wondering, it seems like we're talking about two different areas, and do we have the option to vote on these separately? Or are these just one item, one vote, even though they're two different locations?
The application to the Community Preservation Committee was for both, so I don't think it could be split up.
Dwight Manley, Lower Road. I've walked the whole Pecum Tuck Ridge Trail, and some sections of that trail are served dual purposes. They're not only hiking trails, walking trails, they're also fire access roads. So I'm wondering if these plans would include the ability to use the new trails as fire access road?
Any information on that, Ms. Caswell?
These particular trails, which is the Pecum Tuck Ridge Trail, in this section, which is not true all the way across the ridge, but in this section is a narrow woodland trail, and it would not be suitable for, you know, motorized vehicles or anything like that. The trail that we are anticipating along the Connecticut River would be a wide finished path that could be accessible by all sorts of users, including wheelchair users.
Mr. Russo?
Mr. Moderator, as a follow-up to my previous question, it's great to say citizens are going to maintain this. We've got access to the Deerfield River currently, and I don't know if there's somebody here from police or highway who could speak about the number of hours that are spent monitoring that point, never mind monitoring, picking up trash, dealing with the complaints. We were also told as a body that there was a fundraising group that was going to raise $2 million towards a library, and I think to date they're at 1.3 million. I just don't want to see us go down another hole where we're going to take an $18,000 grant from the state, and it's going to wind up costing the taxpayers much more than that in the future.
Good evening.
Laurie Busada, North Main Street. I have walked the section from Hillside Road to the other direction many, 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 many times and have not seen a speck of trash. The parking lot could use some improvement. It's got a big run there, and it's limited where we can park, but it's not the same kind of issue that the river is, the Deerfield River, and I hope we tackle that at a later time. But I think this is an excellent amount of work from the Open Space Committee, and I thank them very much for this. I think it's a very small investment in one of the highlights of our community, that we have these beautiful walking trails, so I hope people will support it.
Good evening.
Hi there. Irene, Stage Road. I've walked this Stage Road to Hillside Road Trail with great frequency over the last 15 years. And it is a beautiful hiking trail that has been well utilized, and I appreciate the work that the Open Space Committee has been doing. I do have some serious concern that there be access to fire remediation if necessary. I know that the upper trail, the Ridge Road, a couple years ago, there was a fire set up by the water tank that could have easily gotten seriously out of control. I've walked that trail, and two times during COVID, literally, there were people driving cars on that road, kind of lost, like, isn't it okay to drive a car down this hiking trail? So I do have concern about a fire hazard in the woods with the droughts, with the kind of fires that we're seeing across the country, that there be a consideration that there be access to assistance if needed.
Thank you. Okay. All those in favor of the motion as presented? Opposed? That motion carries by a simple majority. Ms. Sylvester?
I move that the town appropriate $4,000 for the cost share for the Land Conservation Assistance Grant to survey Pecum Tuck Rock Parcel Project. And to meet said appropriation, transfer $4,000 from the Community Preservation Fund, Open Space Reserve, all in a manner consistent with the proposal submitted by the Open Space Committee and approved by the Community Preservation Committee. Said funds to be expended within three years under the direction of the Select Board, and any unused funds to be returned to the Community Preservation Fund as required by statute.
Second? Ms. Sylvester?
Again, I'm going to ask Julie to give us some specifics, please.
Ms. Caswell?
Thank you. This is a grant application that the Open Space Committee made to the state of Massachusetts. They have a program to help towns take action that allows a town to protect land that they own or want to acquire. And we applied for survey money to survey Pecum Tuck Rock. Pecum Tuck Rock is about 85 acres, iconic view across the Deerfield River. We would like, it's owned by the town of Deerfield, and we want to ask the town, on town meeting, to vote to preserve it under Article 97. To be able to do that, we need to know where the property that's up there that is under lease to telecommunication towers, where it is. So we needed a survey in order to move on to trying to preserve this land. So the $4,000 is the required match. The state of Massachusetts will be giving $36,000, and the Community Preservation Fund would be providing $4,000.
Thank you. Mr. McDaniel?
I just, I wanted to thank, I don't think your mic is. I wanted to thank the committee for researching this grant. This was going to be part of the last year's protecting the property up there, and I had reservations to do that until we could survey the towers that are up there and make sure that we hold enough land or have enough easements if we ever need to expand or work on the towers up there. So I'm very grateful, in the meantime, you found a grant to pay for the survey. So once we can get that done, we could go ahead and preserve the rest of the land. So, thank you.
All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries by a simple majority. Ms. Sylvester?
I move that the town transfer $46,000 of the Community Preservation Fund 2026 Estimated Revenues to the Reserve for Community Housing. General law, Chapter 44B, requires that a minimum of 10% of estimated revenues be set aside for community housing. And I move that the town transfer $46,000.
Ms. Sylvester, I think you had another motion before these group.
I did. Oh, yes, I did. I'm sorry. I'm trying to move it along.
We appreciate it.
I move that the town appropriate $19,000, a 5% local match, for Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources Grant of $380,000 to create an agricultural preservation restriction on property located on the north side of Pointon Road West and the west side of Sand Gully Road South, Deerfield, Mass., consisting of 21 acres, more or less. And to meet said appropriation, transfer $19,000 from the Community Preservation Fund, Open Space Reserve, all in a manner consistent with the proposal submitted by Stephen and Kathleen Melnick and approved by the Community Preservation Committee, with a stipulation that the appropriation is contingent on compliance with APR requirements. Said funds to be expended within three years under the direction of the Select Board, and any unused funds to be returned to the Community Preservation Fund as required by statute.
Second? Ms. Sylvester?
So as we are a right-to-farm community, and we do support putting land into APR when possible, and this is our required contribution for the state to pay for this land to be preserved.
Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. You can group the next ones together. Appreciate it.
Okay, here we go. I move that the town transfer $46,000 of the Community Preservation Fund 2026 Estimated Revenues to the Reserve for Community Housing. General law, Chapter 44B, requires that a minimum of 10% of estimated revenues be set aside for community housing. And I move that the town transfer $46,000 of the Community Preservation Fund 2026 Estimated Revenues to the Reserve for Historic Resources. General law, Chapter 44B, requires that a minimum of 10% of estimated revenues be set aside for historic resources. And I move that the town appropriate $23,000 from the Community Preservation Fund 2026 Estimated Revenues for Community Preservation Committee Administrative Expenses. And I move that the town transfer $145,000, the balance of the Community Preservation Fund 2026 Estimated Revenues to the Community Preservation Budgeted Reserve.
Second? Ms. Sylvester?
So every year, we get local receipts from our taxes as well as a match from the state, and that total amount requires that we put 10% into each of three categories. One is historic preservation, the other's community housing, and the other is open space and recreation. So this is just a housekeeping of what we are required to do, and then the balance goes into undesignated funds.
All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Sylvester. Article 12, and just before this motion, I did want to ask Town Council to speak briefly in regards to the next couple of motions. They're kind of heavy reading, and just like to put some context on them.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The next three articles have to do with the replacement of bridge project at Stillwater Bridge. And the Massachusetts Department of Transportation is needing to take some permanent easements and temporary easements in order to do that construction. It's a policy of the Department of Transportation, however, to have the towns undertake those takings. As part of this particular project, some of the land is under conservation restriction is held by the Hydro Company, and the conservation restriction is held by the Department of Conservation and Recreation. And that is considered Article 97 land. And in order to do that, we need approval of the legislature, of this body and of the legislature, to approve the transfer of that Article 97 land. And in exchange for that, we have to transfer to DCR similar or better land. And so the first article is a home rule petition, which accomplishes the removal of the Article 97 land in order to do the bridge construction. It also identifies the replacement land. The next article is the actual takings of the small parcels of land to allow the town to do the temporary and permanent takings of those parcels, and they are small parcels. So for example, the Article 97 taking is 16,000 square feet, right? So some of these parcels are even smaller than that. And then the third article is actually authorizing the Select Board to put a conservation restriction on the replacement parcel, which is five acres, which is owned by the town, which is just a little bit down the river, which the Open Space Committee has been looking at and identifying as good long-term open space in any event. And also then to provide an easement to get from the road to the parcel of land. So those are the three articles in a nutshell. And once this all happens, the goal is to be able to have Mass DOT go out to bid at the end of this year to do construction on the bridge next year.
Thank you. Mr. Hilti will make the motion. This is one of those that was in that, the little handout that was at the table, so, Mr. Hilti?
I get to do this, this small portion of this. So I move that the Select Board is authorized to submit the home rule petition as set forth in the handout.
Second? Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. Article 13, Mr. McDaniel?
I move that the town authorize the Select Board to acquire by purchase, gift, eminent domain, or otherwise accept permanent and temporary easement interests in relation to the Massachusetts Department of Transportation's rehabilitation of Upper Road over the Deerfield River, and further to fund said acquisitions through $2,500 of Chapter 90 monies.
Mr. McDaniel?
So this motion clarifies that the bridge project-related easements on Stillwater Upper and Lower Roads will be paid for by Chapter 90 and thus do not need to be appropriated.
All those in favor? Opposed? That is accepted by unanimous vote. Article 14, Ms. Caswell?
I move that the town authorize the Select Board to grant a conservation restriction or fee interest to the Department of Conservation and Recreation for the purposes of conservation and recreation pursuant to Article 97 of the Amendments to the Constitution of the Commonwealth over land consisting of approximately 5.5 acres along the Deerfield River located on Martin's Falls Road off Mill Village Road and identified on the Deerfield Town Assessor's Maps as Parcel ID Number 878, which is presently under the care, custody, management, and control of the Town of Deerfield Select Board for general municipal purposes pursuant to a deed recorded in the Franklin County Registry of Deeds in Book 973, Page 319, and change the purpose to conservation at the time of declaration of restriction or conveyance, and only when the foregoing Article 12 home rule petition is approved by the great and general court, but not until then. And further, that the Select Board be authorized to negotiate and enter into modifications to the easement recorded in the Franklin County Registry of Deeds, Book 973, Page 342, which benefits and provides access to the aforementioned town land over the land of Malinar LLC identified on Assessor's Map Parcel 879, and/or any geographical extension and renegotiation of said easement over the property of Malinar LLC.
Second? Ms. Caswell, do you wish to explain it all or?
I think it was explained that this is the area that is going to now be put under a conservation restriction as a mitigation or a trade for the CR coming off of the easement for the Stillwater Bridge Project.
Thank you. Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Article 15, Mr. McDaniel?
I move the town adopt and enact the amendments to the Franklin Regional Council of Governments FERCOG Charter.
Second. Mr. McDaniel?
So this allows the Franklin Regional Council of Governments to update their charter for the first time in 25 years. Changes include updates to committee and council membership, removal of references to the original formation of the FERCOG that aligns grammar, provide greater clarity, and create greater flexibility when impacting state and federal law changes. You can see attachments, sheets in the, in the, in the handout regarding the charter update.
Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Article 16, Mr. Hilti?
I move that the town accept the provisions of General Law, Chapter 44, Section 54B, to allow town trust funds to be invested in accordance with General Law, Chapter 203C, the so-called prudent investment rule.
Second.
And I would ask somebody who's more qualified to explain this to do so, perhaps the Town Council. Or Brenda Hill.
Ms. Hill, your swan song.
Okay. So, okay, there we go. This is a recommendation by our investment company, and what it allows them to do is to invest in a little wider selection of stocks than what they're currently allowed to invest some of our trust funds in. This doesn't include the stabilization funds or the CPA funds, but it does include some of our smaller trust funds. Town investments can only put a certain amount into stocks, a very small portion of our investments are allowed to be in stocks. But this just gives a little more flexibility on what kind of stocks we can invest in.
Thank you. Any questions? All those in favor? That motion carries. Article 17, Mr. McDaniel?
I move the town change the currently elected position of Town Constable into a Select Board-appointed position of Town Constable in accordance with General Law, Chapter 41, Section 1B, and place on the official ballot of the 2026 annual elections the following question for acceptance by the voters. Shall the town vote to have its elected Town Constables become appointed Town Constables of the town?
There a second? Second. Mr. McDaniel?
So during presidential election cycles, a town could benefit from being able to actively recruit and appoint additional Deerfield Constables to assist with covering numerous state elections and their extended voting hours. The Clerk's Office executed five elections in 2024, three state and two town. It's a variety of other reasons. Cassie wants to weigh in on this as well, was kind of something she was hoping to get done. Just makes it a little easier for us to post things. One thing I will add is that if we have more appointed Constables, right now if we have to serve something, it costs a lot of money to have the Sheriff's Office do it, where it's a little more affordable if we have a Town Constable do it. So, anything you wanted to add?
So, you know, basically just having the flexibility, we found last year that would have definitely helped to be able to appoint an additional Constable in the middle of the year. But having Constables elected, it means that we do not have that flexibility. And the chief, the police department would be involved in the appointment process as well by helping out with the applications.
Any questions? All those in favor, the motion is presented. That motion carries by a simple majority. Article 18, Mr. Hilti?
I move that the town amend the Town of Deerfield general bylaws in accordance with General Law's Chapter 60, Section 62A, by adding a new section as set forth in the warrant.
Second. Second. Mr. Hilti?
So in accordance with recent law changes put into effect in November 2024, municipalities must adopt a payment bylaw or ordinance before any tax agreements may be made with taxpayers on tax titled properties. I think this was an outgrowth of some recent court cases that restricted the Commonwealth's ability or communities' ability to keep the whole profits proceeds from a house that was taken for tax lien reasons. And if, if the Town Council can expand on this or wishes to.
Attorney Mead?
So the Selectmen said it properly. It's an outgrowth of the change in law, and in order to enter into tax agreements now, we have to have a bylaw to authorize the treasurer to do so.
Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. I'm told there's a motion to pass over Articles 19 through 21. Someone would like to make that motion? Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Emma Swedland. I live on Snowberry Circle. And I am requesting that we, I move to, I'm not requesting, I move to pass over this article, Article 19, Specialized Energy Code Bylaw.
And you can do 20 and 21 if you like at the same time?
I can do them all, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Article 20, Zero Emission First Vehicle Policy. It's a citizens' petition, and I move we pass over this article also. Article 21, Decarbonization Resolution. I move that we pass over this article.
Second. Thank you. So essentially, we'll take no action on these articles based on the motion unless there is a vote against doing that. So all those in favor of passing over all these motions, taking no action on them? Opposed? All three of those articles pass unanimously. Article 20, 22.
Good evening. Sorry, Missy Novak, Shuglove Street. Before I make this motion, can I ask for a point of order?
You can.
Great. Last year, we had a vote on a, the same motion, and the vote was very close. And so I'd like to clarify, what steps would we take if the vote was so close that there was a question as to the count?
There is a process in place for you to question the vote.
Can you clarify what that would be?
Technically, I'm not supposed to, but I, it's, it's outlined in our bylaws. Essentially, an individual would have to raise a point of order to question, or actually would make a motion to question the vote. That would have to be agreed upon by seven other voters. And then at that point, that would be, that is debatable. There'd be a vote on whether to question the vote, and then if so, we would proceed with an additional vote in some other method.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you.
So I'd like to make a motion to determine if the town will authorize and request the Select Board to petition the General Court of the Commonwealth for Home Rule Legislation to allow any citizens in the town of Deerfield, notwithstanding the provision of Mass General Law 51, Sections 1 and Section 47A, who have reached the age of 16 or older, to register to vote in municipal elections within the town of Deerfield or take any action relative thereto.
Second. If you could just explain your motion briefly?
Sure, I'm happy to. So as I mentioned, we talked about this at the last meeting, and what I'd like to say, because there's been a lot of discussion about that, or so I hear. I try to stay off of some of the social media pieces, but this is something that has been brought up in many towns in Massachusetts, across the country, across the world, to be honest with you. And we are in a regional district, so the young adults who attend Frontier Regional go to school with their peers who are in towns who have passed this legislation. So because the vote was so close last year, and because we felt that we owed it to the 16 and 17-year-olds of this town to try to keep them on level footing with their peers, that we would bring this forth again for another discussion. To give a little history, there was a resolution that was set to expire that was submitted by the Massachusetts Association of School Committees Board of Directors that was brought forth to a number of folks who attended a conference. This resulted in bringing back a resolution to the Frontier Regional School Committee where this passed that allowed the Massachusetts Association of School Committees to continue with this resolution. This has been a topic that has been brought up to help to encourage civic engagement in the young adults. We do know that there is a gap in participation in voting that tends to happen between 18- and 40-year-olds. And so in an effort to encourage folks to become more engaged in their town politics and their town democratic process, we are a small town that is run by a number of volunteers. I know that you guys are all taking time out of your own lives without any sort of significant reimbursement for that on a day-to-day basis, on a weekly basis, and in particular at these town meetings, just as we all are. But as you can see, we are a fraction of the population of Deerfield who's here in this town. We'd like to help to encourage folks while they are still in their hometowns to become engaged in this process, so that we don't have this 20-year gap of folks getting involved and then coming back. In places where the voting age has been lowered to 16, there has been an increase in participation, which would behoove the town as a whole. It's interesting to me that this has spurred so much controversy, because we include a number of stepping stones for young adults. I have been reminded of this as I have a new 13-year-old who can now sign some of her own consents. She doesn't need me to do it, and she's just turned 13. So we, we enable young adults to take these steps toward an age of maturity. We do this with driver's permits, we do this with boundaries on work, we even do this with marriage for 16-year-olds with parental consent. So there are a number of ways that we allow stepping stones. Not advocating for especially the 13-year-olds, 16-year-olds becoming married, but there are spaces in where we have these things set up to allow young adults to bridge the gap to the age of maturity. We are encouraging these 16-year-olds to begin a habit of becoming involved in the democratic process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looks like we have some individuals at the microphone. If you could just state your name. I believe most of you are non-residents, so just your name is fine.
I'm Josie Silva. I'm here with fellow eighth-grade Frontier students, Jima An, Sienna Costa, and Amy Talbot. I'm one of the students who worked on the citizens' petition to lower the voting age to 16 last year. This petition was passed in other Frontier towns, Sunderland, Conway, and Whately. We brought it back this year because it's important that Deerfield's students get the same opportunities in the future as their classmates from other towns. My friends and I think that giving voting rights to 16 and 17-year-olds would be good for everyone, because it would get us in the habit of voting before we get even busier, make it more likely that we vote consistently as adults. We would get to learn more about town, town politics and town meeting while still living in our home communities where we already care about the issues around us.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Sienna Costa. If this article passes, Deerfield Select Board will ask State Representative Natalie Blay to file a home rule petition with the state legislator, which must be approved by lawmakers before the 16 and 17-year-olds can actually start voting here. Other towns and cities, including Boston, Lowell, Cambridge, Brookline, Southborough, and Northampton, have fired, filed similar petitions. In states where some cities and towns have lowered the voting age to 16, such as in Maryland, Colorado, California, Vermont, and New Jerseys, New Jersey, voter participation rates increased in all age groups. Here in Frontier Regional School District, officials and educators have expressed interest in providing public workshops for eligible voters of all ages about voter registration, the roles of local offices, town meetings, how to research candidates, and more if voting rights are guaranteed to 16 and 17-year-olds. The petition would not allow people under 18 to vote in state or federal elections, nor run for any office.
Hello?
Good evening. I'm Jima. I know that some people think that 16 is too young to be responsible enough to vote. I wonder if you believe that every 18-year-old is responsible enough. What about every 25-year-old? Knowledge and experience are not requirements for voting eligibility. 16-year-olds have many adult rights in Massachusetts, including working a full-time job, paying taxes, getting married, driving a car, and owning and running a business. They are subject to all the laws, but have no say in making them.
Hello?
Hi, Amy Talbot. We have listened carefully to our community about some of the other concerns about this position, and we would like to respond to them. Are we totally inexperienced with money? No. 16-year-olds work jobs and have been managing personal money for years from allowance, jobs, and gifts. Some teenagers work jobs to make financial contributions to their households, which is an indirect way of paying taxes. We are not ignorant of financial responsibilities, and some of us do help pay taxes. It's uniformed and insulting for anyone to say otherwise.
We have also heard claims that because we haven't completed high school coursework by 16, we won't know about how the government works. In reality, civics is a required course for all eighth graders in Massachusetts. We have spent this whole year studying government and even took a trip to Washington, DC to learn more about it. By the time we turn 16, we will have known about these things for years. Studying civics as an eighth grader this year has made us feel even more strongly about this voting issue.
Giving us the right to vote won't rob us of our childhoods. It would make voting an option for those of us who aren't interested and ready, who are interested and ready, but it will, it would not be required of anyone. Some people think teens will only vote the way that their parents tell them to, but they forget that every voter's ballot is private. Other people are worried that all teenagers will vote the same way, and that is just false. We all have different opinions and influences. Bringing those perspectives together is what makes a democracy great.
I'm only 14, and this is the fifth annual town meeting I've attended and spoken at. Kids are engaged. Don't write us off. Please vote yes on this article to build current and future democratic engagement in Deerfield and beyond. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Carrie Etchols. I live on Thayer Street. I am the Chair of the Deerfield Elementary School Committee. I'm a parent, and I am in favor of expanding voting rights to 16 and 17-year-olds. Last year, both the Deerfield Elementary and Frontier Regional School Committees voted in favor of a resolution in support of this article. According to the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, one of our tasks is to engage in advocacy on behalf of our students, and our committees voted in favor of this to show support for our students. Expanding voting rights to these teenagers will allow students to have a say in selecting the school committee that directly affects them and will provide them a learning opportunity. Young people will be able, be able to vote for the first time in a community they know and are invested in instead of after they have left home. Studies show that voting at a young age increases voter participation for a lifetime and encourages young people to pay more attention and be more involved in the politics around them. Our annual town meeting often attracts less than 5% of registered voters. In a busy year, it might be closer to 10%. Last spring, in our town elections, in a very high turnout year, we only had 35% of registered voters go into the poll that day. If there is a way to get more people involved in participating in our local democracy, I am in favor of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Linda Fontaine, Linda Fontaine, North Main Street.
If you can just speak right in that microphone.
Better?
Yes.
Okay. Linda Fontaine, North Main Street. Under Massachusetts General Laws 231 and 850, only those 18-year-olds of age and older possess the fully legally assigned ability to enter into most contracts and engage in all parts of having a contract. Under this general law, minors cannot purchase a house or land. Minors have no financial responsibility. If minors want to learn about the fundamentals of civics as they are in school, they should either continue to ask parents for guidance or continue with the civic classes. Minors cannot be allowed to vote as their vote may alter any one of our financial situations and/or tax rate. I urge you to vote no. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Mark Brennan. And I live-
Straight up to the mic, Mark, please.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mark Brennan, and I live on sixty-six Pointon Road. I am a taxpayer and a business owner, and I do pay taxes at the state and federal level for my business. I spoke about this last year at this meeting, actually. Last year at this meeting. I've been to a lot of annual town meetings and the special meetings, and I've noticed that I am one of the few kids that have been here. I have noticed that not many of the kids that were at Frontier when I was at Frontier were here. In those, I've also noticed I'm one of the youngest kids here. Sometimes I will be the youngest kid or the youngest person in the room. Oh, jinx. Before Vietnam, the voting age was twenty-one. During Vietnam, lobbyists lobbied for eighteen-year-olds to vote so they could have a say in their future. We drew the line here for a reason. While kids are sixteen and their prefrontal cortex is still forming, they should be watching what other voters have to say. So, when they are eighteen, they can make educated decisions. It is a parent's job to make sure their kid is educated and informed, not their kid's job to inform their parents. Thank you.
Hello.
Hi, I'm Mary Decision from Sett Right Road. I just have a question. It was unclear when the kids were speaking. Where are, what residents are they? Are they all Deerfield residents?
I believe they were on the motion that we started with saying they were not residents. Correct.
Okay, were any?
I'm sorry, there's a-
How many?
How many? One was, yes.
One. Okay, so if this was really a Deerfield issue, wouldn't children sixteen-years-old of Deerfield be here if this was really an issue for that? That's my question. If this was something that should affect Deerfield, they should have some representatives from Deerfield.
If you'd like to comment.
I will just clarify that this was brought up as the motion was made that because these young adults all go to school together, all of their peers live in towns that have already passed these motions. And so if this is the first step, what needs to happen next would be that we would ask for this home rule legislation to be brought to the state. And so there are folks from Deerfield who are here who are young adults because they are not yet sixteen, and they may be well beyond sixteen by the time this goes to the state. So this is a step. This is unlikely to impact young adults that are sixteen currently.
Thank you. Yes.
Lori Baronis, South Mill River Road, South Deerfield. I have been attending a lot of the selectmen's meetings. I've attended some meetings online, and I unfortunately have not seen any sixteen-year-old kids at any of these meetings. The only ones that I ever see are the ones running the FCAT for the video. That's it. The only people who were younger than me happened to be at one selectmen's meeting that I recall where the walk was, their liquor license was denied, and they had to get it reinstated. And there was a huge contingent of younger people than me in the audience trying to get that vote to pass. Once the vote passed and the select board reinstated the license, the whole contingent of people left. So I think if our kids were really interested, they would be at these meetings and they would be learning. And I have to say that there's many of you in this audience that are not in attendance either. So I would vote not to have sixteen-year-olds vote.
Hello.
I'm Charlene Golinski, three forty-two River Road. After last year's vote, which really was a close vote by three, and it was defeated, I felt very interested to do a little searching of information about how that article even came to be and how this year's article came to be. So I'm going to present facts to you because facts are important for people to know. I think you heard from at least two of the present school committee people that this was presented last year as a resolution that was heard at a Massachusetts Association of School Committees. There were, the listing of resolutions I saw, there were several. This was the one resolution that came back to the Frontier, it was a joint Frontier School Committee meeting. And there were other wonderful resolutions on there, alternative testing for MCAS, et cetera. But this was the one that was selected, and it was Jessica Corwin who presented it at that particular meeting. I would like to say that it wasn't unanimous by all the towns that were there. There were two school committee members, one from Conway and one, I believe, from Sunderland, and they felt that this wasn't even something the school committee should be discussing because obviously it has a little bit of a political agenda to it. But that didn't go in any direction. So the discussion continued, and everybody who wanted to speak spoke. And I want to thank Trevor McDaniel at that meeting because he was serving as a select board member and a school committee member. And at that meeting, he made a statement that he was hoping young people would get an interest in voting. And I want to quote what he said at that meeting. "They have not grasped the responsibility of taxes and requirements for running a town." He also mentioned that town meeting decisions have real-life consequences for employees. So sixteen-year-olds and seventeen-year-olds could be making some serious voting decisions that infect people who are working in this town. And as far as the town votes last year, yes, three towns voted in favor of it. But I would like everybody to know, because I really did a lot of research, this joint meeting happened on April ninth. Seventeen days later, Sunderland had their annual town meeting and was asked to vote on it. Now, I'm all about communication. I believe the town of Sunderland was not fairly treated to even know this was coming about. And I have to tell you a quick anecdote. My husband and I were coming out of church Sunday. A Sunderland resident came up and mentioned, oh, Deerfield's going to be voting that sixteen-year-old. And my husband said to him, you do know Sunderland voted that in last year. The man had no knowledge of it one year later. So this is a serious issue, and a serious issue should take time to get the word out so everybody who wants to have something to say can say it. This was done quickly last year, so quick that the town of Deerfield, I don't know if you know this, we voted on it twenty days after we heard about it. Twenty days. That's not even three weeks. Anyway, I know you're going to cut me off, but-
I am.
Oh, please. I do so much-
There's a long line behind you, and we appreciate it, but we do want everyone to-
Let me just do what I think are the key points. This year's article, and I spoke to a school committee member, is not being presented by our school committee. There was no discussion this year about this article. The people who are presented here are school committee people, but they did not have a discussion of this at any of their meetings. Number two, that's more than important to me. This sounded like it's a very big school initiative. It was not. I communicated with the administration at Frontier, and one of the administrators spoke with every teacher at the school that could possibly teach these courses, and not one teacher at Frontier had a discussion or any research on the topic of lowering the voting age. So this was not anything the school was pushing. It was the school committee last year, no school committee this year. I'm a thirty-seven-year-old, thirty-seven, wouldn't I wish. I'm a thirty-seven-year educator. Thirty-one years I was in the classroom, six years I was a principal. And I know child development. From childhood to adulthood, you have transition, which is your adolescence. They are not ready yet, and they do need a background. They do need a foundation. I was sort of disappointed to hear one of the girls say, you don't need this and you don't need that. Absolutely wrong. You do need an understanding. That's how you become an intelligent voter. I'm asking you to vote this down. It's not the time to do it. There hasn't seemed to be any interest in the young people in the town yet, and I just think it's the wrong move for the town of Deerfield.
Good evening.
Beverly Erlosky Lee Road. I'm in agreement with what Mrs. Golinski said. I will say that I'm very pleased that these young students have had the opportunity to think about this and come up and support their view. However, I'm going to come at this from a different view, and that's really practicality. I'm a forty-four-year banker. I retired four years ago. What did I do in banking? I was a financial officer. I was a financial officer that mostly dealt with young individuals, not sixteen to eighteen, but twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, in helping them buy a house on the financial side. Not going out and finding the house, but basically getting their finances in order so they knew what to do to buy a house. Most everything in here today is about finances. Everybody who was sitting here and heard that, I'd say ninety percent of this is about spending the money in the town. The people that I dealt with all those years, forty-four years in banking, on financing, I was absolutely amazed at how little they understand about their own personal finances. They didn't know where their bank accounts were. They didn't know how much money they had in the bank. They didn't know what they had for debts. They didn't know what they paid for money. How does this have bearing on this? Only because we're looking at the finances of the town, yet we're having young people come in who have a really difficult time handling finances themselves. I know, I was one of the major mortgage officers in this area. I dealt with hundreds of people every year. I applaud what they're trying to do, but as Mrs. Golinski said, I don't think they're anywhere near ready. Thank you.
Good evening.
Tom Albert, eighty-five Upper Road. I would just like to say, I'm twenty-two years old, and I've been coming to these meetings since I was sixteen. So it's kind of interesting to see what's going on in the past two years. Of the four towns, we're the only town that did not pass this. It's kind of interesting. So I would just like to say that I would like to call this to vote. Thank you.
There's a second on the call to vote, so what that means is that debate will stop at this point. We need to take a vote, and if two-thirds of the individuals here wish to stop all of their debate and move right to a vote on the article, the motion, then that will happen.
Can you please let the rest of the speakers talk?
So, again, right now, there's been a call to question, there's been a second, so we're going to take a vote on whether we are going to stop all debate and vote on the underlying motion. Does everyone understand what we're doing? Did you have a point of order, or did you want to talk?
I'd like the chance to speak.
No, so we can't do that, unfortunately, under our rules. So all those in favor of calling the question and taking a vote at this time, you can raise your hands. All those opposed? That has passed by two-thirds majority, so we will vote at this time without further debate. So, again, I don't know how the vote's going to go, but if it is close like last year, it is going to take some time for me to count it, so bear with me. So all those in favor of the motion as presented. I'm going to count this section first, so all of you can put your hands down for now. Trevor, you can, anyone on this side that's in favor? I'm not going to be able to do it, so I'm going to come to the side. It's easier, so.
I think it's a more philosophical.
I think it's a more philosophical.
I'm sorry.
I think it's a more philosophical.
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 I think it's a more thoughtful.
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 So there are more than seven that have questioned the vote, so we do need to, uh, move to an alternative method to, uh, count the ballots, so. Uh, I believe that we are equipped to do that with, um, paper ballots.
Who is opposed to it?
Yes?
Do you mind if we count the votes?
Uh, I cannot, no.
Why can't we just use the...
I can't hear you, ma'am, if you wanted to come to the microphone.
Why don't we just vote with these and leave them on yes and no, and then you can count these?
Uh, the clerk has developed a, a method for alternative voting, so anticipating this possibility, so. At this point, you're going to be handed a ballot. It has a yes and a no on it, you're going to tear off your vote and place it into the box. So we have a box, so we're going to hand out the ballots. Miss dropped into the microphone, I can't, I can't hear you.
Question, yes please, you're voting for, no please, you're opposed.
Correct.
We need to know what they're doing, Dan, because there's a yes and a no on the ballot. So...
Thanks for having a ballot.
The yes and the no on the ballot, you know, you're going to vote here and vote on yes and no.
You need to, microphone, Dan, microphone.
There's a yes? There's a, there's a yes? There's a yes and a no on the ballot, so if you're in favor of the motion, you're going to tear off the yes and place it in the box, and hang on to the no. If you're not in favor, you're going to tear off the no and place that in the box. The ballots that are in the box will then be counted. Any questions? Have a seat, please. Uh, so there was a, a secret ballot, um, the results were a hundred and seven nos, and a, um, I'm sorry, a hundred and seven yeses and a hundred and ninety-four nos, which was within about three votes of what my count was, so I know there were some questions about some of the irregularities in putting ballots in, but it's consistent with my vote, and therefore the motion has been defeated. Uh, I moved at the meeting adjourned to meet in the polls at the meeting room at the town offices at eight Conway Street in the village of South Deerfield on May fifth, two thousand and twenty-five at ten AM for the purpose of elections, and at the closure of the polls, dissolve. Second, I'd like to thank FCAT for everything and for everyone sticking around this evening. Take care. Thank you all. Thank you. Thank you.